So he's just gonna come in as a attendee and I have more panelists.
Okay.
We have a few more time calls up on him.
Cause he's probably on his phone and I'm blocking on.
But he can't hear us.
I could see.
You wanna stop it, you don't know what you got it. Cause they don't wanna make it. You haven't started the one hour either. Don't know, probably. Don't know.
Something to throw down at.
I'm sorry, why? It doesn't show up.
Okay, it's number couple of nights every seven o'clock before we get started. All Johnson City Council meeting number twenty-three dash eleven, order. Can I have a call please?
Burkhart.
Here.
Cope.
Here.
Ready.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
And welcome everyone that is in the audience. You hear for an item that is on the agenda, we've asked you to wait to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under the word communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. And we have quite a few young people in the audience. So what I like to do, you know, invite all the young people to come up. And we have some opportunities. So if you're willing to help us out, it's time for everybody to invite everybody. That would be this level thirty-nine to six. And you're comfortable with experience. One hundred and ten under now. Then you're going to do all thirteen. Your, um, your names are. Here.
My name is. My name is West, I go to Johnson.
My name is Charlie and I go to Johnson.
Which will you look?
Blossom.
My name is Lily, I go to Los Angeles.
My name is Maggie, I go to San Francisco. I really heard them.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is the agenda of the vote, might we have any changes to the agenda?
Evan.
Council, any changes? Do you mind? We have a motion to move the agenda. Go move. We have a motion and a second discussion. Stand by please.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Cope.
Motion passed. Moving on to public communications, we have two listed public communications this evening. The first is the Oval Office of John Lee Wade's Officer, Liz Faulkner.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As you've heard me say before, one of the best parts of my job, when we handle community organization and you're not gonna be disappointed in you tonight. So I'm gonna call off her least fall clarity by the moment, please, and then before you have a read a little bit about her law enforcement career to this day. She began with the Johnson Police Department on May twenty-second, two thousand and three. She's an out of state natural transfer candidate coming to us from the city of Moab Police Department in Moab, Utah. Where she served as a domestic violence investigator. Officer Faulkner originally from Albuquerque, Mexico, and began law enforcement through that city in the spring of twenty seventeen. In addition to professional experience as a detective, Lisa has expertise in forensic interviewing, experienced custody crisis intervention team member. Mental health and examination training, medical examination training, has certified and inspected the weapons platform which we're exploring in the future. Officer Faulkner also holds a bachelor's degree in psychology with a minor in immunology. And has prior professional work experience as a youth program officer and criminal sociological research assistant. Officer Faulkner has made a recent career move alongside her husband, who's also present at this evening, who was originally from the Moine area. And is also a police officer now from the city of Iowa. Police is focused on the greater community policing platform that we offer in the Johnson Police Department. She decided her more professional opportunities, and I think I'm fairly certain that we won't believe she's gonna be great for our community. With that, there are fairly so renewed for her own cause.
But she didn't take it.
Sure. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Sorry.
That's right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Liz Faulkner.
I, Liz Faulkner.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and partially.
And that I will faithfully and partially.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
To start all the duties.
To start all the duties.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
In Johnson, Iowa.
In Johnson, Iowa.
As now owner after.
As now owner after required by law.
Required by law. Congratulations. You couldn't see this back there, but most of us just kind of scribbled something on at the ending, and the signatures are all identical. Well, Liz, you know, I just wanna thank you so much for coming to Johnson. Our, uh, police chief has done an incredible job recruiting and retaining some incredible police officers in this community. And we're excited that you took, took his offer up and have relocated here along with your husband. Uh, who is working for a neighboring community, but that's a good thing. You can work and work together. Uh, we're really excited that you chose to come to, uh, come to Johnson and join our police force here. And I can tell you, maybe you're, you're gonna thoroughly enjoy working with all our police officers and, uh, however, the other staff and, and police chief. Um, who just got an incredible team here and they were a great job protecting us every day. So again, congratulations. Yeah.
Yeah. We have a number of supporters.
Now are you doing what I told you? It doesn't. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a proclamation declaring June twenty-five, three, National Gun Violence Awareness Month in Johnson, Iowa. I don't know if there's anybody in the audience who wants to see this, but I mean. Maybe there's, I'm glad to see so many of you here. I'll come down and I'll read the proclamation. And I know that, I know that, uh. I believe it's one comment for us. I don't know if that, where's the second? Okay, great. Do you have something that you wanna say about national gun violence awareness? Okay, well, let me, let me read the proclamation first. And then we'll, uh, have you make some comments? And then we'll have everybody come out there and have a, who's taking with, with all of you and, and I'll have that. And it's. The long proclamation print is really small. Trying to get as much as possible on one page, uh, but it's, it's all, all good stuff. So let me try it without my glasses. My name, I said, I can give you the class. This is a proclamation declaring June twenty-twenty-three as National Gun Violence Awareness Month in Johnson, Iowa. Whereas every day more than one hundred and twenty Americans die as a result of gun violence. And more than two hundred are shot and wounded by illegal, subpoated, or unsafe gun use. And whereas US rate of gun deaths, ten point six per one hundred thousand people, is much higher than most other developed countries. Like Canada, that has gun rate death of two point one for one hundred thousand. Germany with a zero point nine gun, gun death rate, and the United Kingdom at zero point three. And whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control, three hundred and sixty-four islands died from gun-related deaths then in twenty-twenty-two. A rate of eleven point two deaths for one hundred thousand people. While Iowa's rate of gun deaths is low compared to other states, a lot from the bottom, one death due to gun violence is too many. And whereas globally, most gun deaths. Are homicides, but in the United States, most are suicides. Of the nearly forty-nine thousand Americans who died from firearms in twenty-twenty-one. Twenty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-eight, or fifty-four percent, committed suicide using a gun. Whereas while most adults whose deaths involve a gun are suicides, the majority of children and teens killed by gunfire are victims of homicide. Gun deaths among children and teens rose fifty percent in just two years. From one thousand seven hundred, seven hundred and thirty-two in twenty-nineteen to two thousand five hundred and ninety in twenty-twenty-one. And whereas twenty-twenty-two marked the most violent school year since nineteen ninety-nine, with forty-six shootings. Thirty-four students and adults were killed in those shootings. The most recent school shooting on March twenty-seventh of this year took six lives. Three children and three adults at Covenant School in Nashville, Tennessee. And whereas local officials, local law enforcement, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources. Are most familiar with local activities that may lead to gun violence, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their communities safe. And whereas Johnson-like individuals in the Johnson Police Department are committed to reducing gun violence, encouraging responsible gun ownership. And, and use, and feeding firearms out of hands to dangerous people in order to keep our communities safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as the number of firearm homicides and suicides. Called to the meth毒 violence hotlines and school shootings are on an increase across our country. And whereas, we is recognized with National Gun Violence Awareness Month. An orange, a color that symbolizes the value of human life, is worn by American prosperity. To bring awareness about gun violence into the honor of the lives of gun violence victims, students, survivors. Now therefore, I call here, Mayor of the City of Johnson. And on behalf of Johnson City Council, declare June twenty-twenty-three as National Gun Violence Awareness Month. And call upon all residents to wear orange during the week, again, on June second through June ninth. And to work collaboratively with local officials, local law enforcement, our schools, businesses, and other organizations in efforts to prevent tragic effects. Of gun violence into honor and value of all human lives. And I sign the way it is for itself. Women, I want to thank Bethany for bringing this, uh, request to us into proclamation, and I want to thank all of you for being here. And this is an entirely important, important, uh, issue, and I thank you all, this statistics and the proclamation describe that point home. Uh, I wore the only thing that I had that has one chance. I was, and I wanted to, uh, do a, you know, in recognition of, uh, what we're doing in this month and, uh, this week in Johnson, in fact. Uh, confirm this for me, Jan, but during this week, starting on June second and June ninth. City Hall is lit up at night in the color of orange. And ripples as well. And the bridge. Amen. Okay, well, we, we've done it here at this location. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that, and then we try by some. See that it is sort of in recognition of the whole gun violence, this is gun violence, tank of gun violence awareness week. Bethany, do you wanna come up and, uh, maybe?
Thank you so much. Um, this is, this is sort of hard for me to talk about. I don't get emotional a lot. But, um, I have two kiddos there, and I think like anybody who's a parent, um, every time you hear about another shooting, you think that it could be your kid. And it's really hard to watch your tiny kid and their giant backpacking on the bus and send them off to school. So, um, my friend Bridget and I, who's a Johnson mom. Um, I'll talk about this a lot, and finally decided that it was time to get more involved and raise awareness. Um, so we joined Moms Command Action, which is the group that's here today, and, um, they're the ones who organize all of this, so we're really grateful for their support. Um, when I emailed you and the council, um, I thought, oh, I, I hope this happens. I don't know if this will happen, but the outpouring of support from every member of the council and you was wonderful. I talked with one of the police officers on the way in, and they were really supportive, and so we're grateful of the community that can come together. Um, we believe that there's a lot of common sense ways that people can come together, and it doesn't have to be a divisive issue. There's a lot of things we can do to keep our family and friends safe. So we're just grateful to you all for allowing us to do this and our support and effort. So thank you. We're happy to have you in the community.
Again, we're very pleased to, uh, use proclamation of the information we want. And I can tell you that our police officers, you know, we, we, we truly do have some of the best anywhere. And they work very hard to keep us, uh, safe every day, whether it's in our homes, on our streets, or in our schools. So, you know, we want to work with you and, and, you know, and do your efforts to, uh, keep our communities safe as possible. So thanks again. Kevin, let's, uh, I was bringing up a better, uh, do. We are still under public communications. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to press count on an item that is here on the agenda? Very well, put it out. People move on to public hearing. We have five other hearings. Three. The first one, four A, Consider Adoption Resolution, Plankton dash one forty-four, adopting revenue purpose statement. For the franchise fees established by the proposed electric franchise ordinance. Will accompany on the proposed electric franchise ordinance to consider adoption of the electric franchise ordinance, ten ninety-nine, with Mid-American Energy Company. We'll open this public hearing at seven twenty-two.
Fair, I would say, uh, thank you for that, uh. Now, if this is all during both electric ordinance planning, who changed this, we are a company that is imposing an electric franchise fee. Um, if, as you call me, this year, twenty twenty-three, with the budget, they call there the replacement of the one percent of their block sales to have completely one percent of franchise. Now, some important measures will close, uh, franchise includes a, is a twenty-five year franchise agreement. Uh, it can be amended or terminated in the year five, ten, fifteen, or twenty. Uh, on the end, which would be, so back to, uh, like I could give franchise. Uh, the proposed franchise fee at one percent, uh, all their energy sales within city limits will be replaced. Will replace to be one percent of the block sales tax. Now, this will not cause financial changes, but potential commercial, uh, in our public customers. However, uh, there are none of the government accounts really have seen an increase due to this franchise. Due to this council, uh, direction was to implement that franchise fee on the government, uh, surge one. Or, uh, this will then given, uh, fully supported by this thing. It's also worth noting that all of the metro cities do, uh, charge the franchise fee in their own. Uh, for, for the post ordinance, um, we are limited to increasing the franchise fee once every twelve months, so due to the government. For, uh, we restrict the making of the change. Uh. When, uh, one of our members is a, uh, rather large team, you know, franchise. When a city project requires a tilth to vote, we vote for the general city is not paid for that relocation. However, uh, under this agreement, uh, Mid-American Energy law requires that we locate facility in the second, uh, building expense, uh, looking to find it during. Uh, so tonight, after that whole public hearing on proposed ordinance, uh, council finds the possible acceptable, uh, they should declare not. Let me put this statement or purpose statement for the franchise fees established, you know, proposed ordinance. Uh, and then approve the first reading. With that, we have a lot of questions that council has.
Other questions? Do you mind? Is there anyone in the audience who wants to press count on this? Do you mind? We will close our hearing at seven twenty-five. Do we have a motion to approve our resolution, number five three dash one forty-four? And some move. You have a motion in the second discussion? And hold please.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Here.
What's next? Moving on to item four B, Consider Adoption Resolution, number twenty-three dash one forty-five, adopting the revenue purpose statement.
So you approved the, the reservation, now we need the first reading on the ordinance.
So do we have a motion to approve, to the first reading of? The electric franchise ordinance number ten ninety-nine.
Some move.
We have a motion in the second discussion? Stand by please.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Here.
Evans.
Yes.
Start to push forward and get a few suggestions if I can. Moving on to item four B, Consider Adoption Resolution, number twenty-three dash one forty-five. Adopting the revenue purpose statement for the franchise fees established by the proposed gas franchise ordinance. For the public hearing, the proposed gas franchise ordinance, we consider adoption of the gas franchise ordinance eleven. Zero, zero, with the, with Mid-American Energy Company. We'll open this public hearing at seven twenty-seven.
This mirrors pretty much the electric franchise ordinance, so lots of questions.
Want some other questions, do you mind? Is there anyone in the audience who wants to press count on this side? Do you mind? Close the public hearing at seven twenty-eight. Do we have a motion to approve adoption, resolution number twenty-three dash one forty-five?
A move, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? And hold please.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve adoption of the gas, new best ordinance number eleven zero zero?
Move.
Second. You have a motion in the second discussion? Stand by please.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Motion passed. Motion passed. Item four C, public hearing, first consideration of ordinance number ten ninety eight, made in chapter one fifty three of residential rental code. We will open this public hearing at seven twenty nine.
Uh, good evening. The public hearing is to update the residential rental code. Uh, we were here previously and spoke with council. There were some changes that we didn't make, um, as you guys, but the, uh, first meeting, as we did, um, update the language that was in the footnote and they will, uh, hopefully it's fine, but acceptable. There were some questions that we did also, uh, feel from council. We are not able to track the common issues with the safety concerns in mind, but on the parent software. Uh, with that said, I did speak with the inspectors to verify, you know, some of the common trends that they see. Generally, what we see that the common trends are, are fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, and faulty G F I. But it's a little bit the common ones. After that, it's, uh, hit or miss a few things here and there, generally speaking, nothing that is a great thing here. Uh, the other question that we did have, but that was presented was over occupancy. Uh, we don't see that a lot. Uh, there's, there's not the, the temptation to put a lot of occupancy within a structure. Uh, when noted, uh, there is a provision within the, the property maintenance code that addresses that. It said the occupancy level based on square footage of the, the dwellings. So for the way to address it, if we can find it, but it's not a, a situation that is common. So far. Uh, with that, um, otherwise the ordinance is widely unchanged, uh, because the minor changes we did add was to the registration process. And the fee schedule. On May twenty third, we sent an email out to all property owners that have registered rentals within the city of Johnston. For feedback, we gave them a copy of the ordinance, uh, with an invitation to present a question and they come to the next meetings. Uh, as of today, we only had one person reach out, um, with some general questions. And then, uh, the biggest question they had was whether or not they were current to the registration. But we have not received any feedback, um, negative to the updates. Uh, with that, um, there is one change that I would have to bring up is. The staff report indicates that you're looking for an August first, uh, adoption date. That is our desired adoption date, but it itself has a July first adoption date. Uh, it was noted after we had sent everything in for you, um, for the agenda. So I would indicate that we would ask for the August first adoption date. Uh, otherwise, I can answer any questions that, uh, council or mayor, anyone may have.
Well, I'll make sure, um, the ordinance itself says July first, but you're suggesting that that be changed.
Correct.
So we need, we, we need to make an amendment to. Or it's, yeah.
Or it can be corrected.
Oh, okay. Other questions, council? Is a public hearing on this side? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to press council? Seeing none, we'll put back the public hearing agenda at seven thirty two. Do we have a motion to approve first consideration of ordinance number ten ninety eight?
I move second.
Have a motion in the second discussion. Stand up, please.
Evans.
Yeah.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven A, conduct public hearing on the matter of adoption of plan specifications on the contract and scheme of cost. With a little Beaver Creek sanitary sewer extension segment two A, you consider resolution twenty three dash one forty one. Adopting plans, expectations, contract and scheme of cost. Consider construction bid, consider resolution of twenty three dash one forty two, making a war on that. Open this public hearing at seven thirty three. Now.
Good evening, mayor. I'm here for the council. On May twenty third, the city received bids for the Little Beaver Creek sanitary sewer extension place to wait. Uh, project, uh, had a map here, something to see, breeding line, first year began, uh, that will be inside of the, 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 of course. And open moving around tower grad. Uh, this was, this is the second phase of extending sanitary sewer to the northwest road area. Uh, we did have four bidders on the project. Uh, the engineers' opinion, probably the cost was six million, two hundred and forty two thousand and forty four dollars. The little bidder received was six million, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, six hundred and fifty. Forty cents. Uh, about a one percent hundred, I think, in the business. So, um, this, the certified intent that showed that J K contracting, it is the little bidder, um, staff and engineer with revenue approval.
Council, any questions from Matt?
Um, this J K contract, have we done, who's been, who's done it before?
Yes, we've worked with J K successfully on some of the projects, the most recent project that we worked with J K. They did the underground, they were subcontractor for the sixty second and World A, where, where, okay. Okay.
Any other questions from Matt? There's a public hearing on this side. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to press come? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing now at seven thirty five. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty three dash one forty one?
Over the second.
You have a motion in the second discussion. Stand up, please.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Here.
Evans.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution?
Yes.
Was that a yes on the motion?
No, sorry. Just, just want to make sure you heard my vote. Sorry.
Um, well, I'll accept it as a yes on the motion.
All right, fine. That's, I'm good.
Got a motion in the second discussion. And hold please.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Motion passed. Item four E, conduct public hearing to consider resolution number twenty three dash one forty eight. Determining an area of the city to be an economic development area. And that the redevelopment, conservation, redevelopment, development, or combination thereof. Such area is necessary in use for the local health, safety, or welfare of residents of the city. Designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting amendment number five to Beaver Creek West Economic Development. We will open this public hearing at seven thirty six.
Good evening, council. Uh, I will give you a brief rundown of the objective of this, uh, to Beaver Creek West district. Um, this amendment is likely to be removing some properties in Roughwood, um, flat that will be then placed into the zip district. We are removing these properties to be moved a bit better, um, in the plan of the new district we are creating. The law can be, uh, in the Midwest district. We are additionally adding some light away on the sixth street going south from Dickenport at a reception. Um, the area adding the Keystone is the old Burgling property. We have developed a agreement in the process of, uh, providing a grant to facilitate the dental issues that were removed last year. Uh, this amendment to the Beaver Creek district also allows for, uh, at least is about five million dollars in incentives. For developments in the council's district, um, in the future. Um, this is mostly, I guess, that is the gist of this amendment. Um, just to add these four parcels in virtue of the flat, virtue of crossing the flat on, you know, the side of the interstate ramp. And remove the two, uh, properties that will be developed in the future by Steve Scott, who has said every resource.
Other questions from Peter? If you want, Peter. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to press council? Uh, we will close the public hearing then at seven thirty eight. We have a motion to approve resolution number twenty three dash one forty eight. Some more.
Ready.
You have a motion in the second discussion. Stand up, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve, adopting amendment number five to Beaver Creek West Economic Development Urban Renewal Plan? Some more.
I said it.
And motion in the second discussion. Stand up, please.
Ready.
Here.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item four F, conduct a public hearing, consider resolution for twenty three dash one forty nine. Determining an area of the city to be an economic development and blighted area. And that the redevelopment, conservation, redevelopment, development, combination thereof. Such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city. Designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal project and adopting the north west eighty sixth street urban renewal plan. We will open this public hearing at seven forty.
It's under a lot of time, many urban renewal plans, uh, not created a new urban renewal plan in area, uh, last thing did, I believe, twenty thirteen. Uh, that is what was being proposed here this evening, expiration of what we call northwest eighty sixth street urban renewal area. Uh, it would be designated as a blighted area, redevelopment, uh, variety of needs, try to engage those blighted influences. Let's talk briefly about the three commercial, private commercial areas within the, uh, proposed district. Uh, the first is, uh, that Griffiths Properties in Brumwood, by Steve Scott. South of the, um, building and west of the building. Properties south are recently demolished, it's from the vacant property. Properties west are two rental properties, uh, certainly sugar H. That subdivision is served by North Water District, uh, that does not have sufficient firework paths. We run through the pipes for instructors, that is one of the elementary development of the site. We can go and still, for example, those have, um, city fire water or city water, so we can, it, with the circular system and water were a mass use. The same scenario kind of like take place right, uh, on these other courses as well. The second property is new from the fresh shopper building, uh, something, some structural damage, uh, several twenty one freezing. Probably just over two years now, I believe, uh, it's an age structure, over six parking lot. Uh, we are at a long term lease, it's a remark at grace, uh, with the, uh, the, the, the company. Probably ever, uh, the tenants sell, or to, uh, find a very lease, uh, for rates. There's also a restricted covenant on the first part of two hundred fifty of the property, uh, that is sure to enter the structure there. There's also several amendments to the law of this property, which was, was, in this later urban renewal area. The third group of properties is, this is to southwest of the intersection, both was sixty seconds. And eighty sixth street. There's three commercial buildings there, uh, the two south buildings, uh, the Chris Case buildings, southwest most one, they've been for six years since I've been here. Uh, that, uh, the mere building to just east or were owned until recently by an absentee landlord, uh, but the burgers. Uh, hit behind, they're reading us by the bank, a bank recently sold them to developer who's trying to rehabilitate buildings and piece them out. Uh, so there's some bottom back to be there, they are still vacant, and they're building, uh, north of that, for Ohio Bank Association, which is on, they're very, very good.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're putting either big, uh, parcels or present under parcels that are expected to be developed to occur. Um, and then there's public right of way included as well, uh, pretty much the entire stretch, uh, so the city of Johnson, the eighth sixth streets. Well, there's, uh, similarly, not even two days apart from the west, uh, or, uh, six, seven. Uh, as part of that, then we're going to put two potential future public improvement projects. First being redevelopment of what's eighty sixth street at some point, future facilities. And second, this construction of the trail, uh, along east side of what's eighty sixth street, nor the sixty second. We don't have any protect or any current development agreements posed with this district. There is a property that's been under scheduling for a long time, any familiar with this mixed use, uh, problems, which God is what we mean as, um, a few parts of the south, uh, don't, don't, it's building. Uh, we are getting work through the specifics of any development agreement for that. We have not, don't, maybe outlines of potential framework for that here, the servitorial plan. But that dog, uh, will be brought forward, you see, castle at some point in the future, uh, for, like, that. We've also allowed for additional development agreements to, uh, be implemented without further amendment to this servitorial plan. Uh, that was not, not to receive ten million dollars. Uh, but again, any of those golf agreements. Ingrid, it's specific golf agreement, so public hearing, people specifically, so for that. There's also some miscellaneous provisions for other costs that can be heard in this district. The full planning, engineering, staff, expenses for activities to take place in which are the typical area. The base valuation is then reset in ordinance, uh, following considerations for renewal plan. So evaluation, uh, first twenty twenty two base value. A consultation itself, impact taxing agencies, uh, there's no comments received, but with those who published, uh, the comments received. And for newer renewal plans, uh, the other party brought forward, uh, the planning, lending committee, mention, uh, this was, the minutes are included here. Uh, and for the requirement, state requirements, we did find that without consideration, it's happened to be the specifics of development agreements or incentives for public improvements. Uh, but the plan for this servitorial area was, was dry, like, forty. With that, I will conclude. Any questions?
Any questions for Ira?
Just had a comment. I did think that P M Z notes were, uh, it was a good discussion and covered a lot of, uh, territories. And I appreciated how thorough the notes were and what our P M Z council would have been thinking.
Any other comments or questions? It says a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to press council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at seven forty six. Do we have a motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty three dash one forty nine? I move. We have a motion in the second for the discussion. Stand up, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Motion passed. Adam, is there a second motion here? Or is that just part of the description of the first?
There's only one motion and, and I was looking at the previous, yeah, I, was there two motions made on that?
Uh, yes, maybe we didn't use.
Yeah, there's only been one, the, the, the voluntary, called the voluntary inspiration of the president, twenty three one forty eight. It's like, oh, yeah, I have either a second one or a.
Okay, yeah. My mistake. You want short changes, you want, you know, definitely, I'm, 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 I'm. Better than that, in the mean, I mean. Moving on to consent again. Do we have a motion for, for the consent?
I'm a loser.
You have a motion in the second discussion. Stand up, please.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consignment agenda. Item seven A, consider resolution number twenty three dash one twenty seven, directing sale of nine million, seven hundred and eighty thousand. Subject to adjustment for terms of offering, general obligation on series two zero two three K.
Please, I'm a fellow, um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be prepared for a few of the rest. Yeah, I'm trying to get to order. Or why I always think I do last name on, she's looking at having financial. Now, um, the sequel is on line, if he needs to answer a question, great. However, great, gonna, um, handle the, uh, sale information we've had today. Um, but I did lay on the dice for you. The resolution that would pin work offs that have been blind lines. So laying on your dice is the resolution with the, um, numbers filled in for the successful bidder. And then, um, within that, uh, resolution is the actual, um. High key that, uh, here, we'll talk about the optioner over here.
Good evening, council, um, my name is, my name is very sport, we're getting on financial advisor and we are the chief of fire of the city of Johnson. Today at ten AM, the city took bid from the high million seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar general obligation bond series twenty twenty three. Leading up to the sale, we have a rating call with African global and after the presentation was reviewed by the. A rating call company, uh, the city. I think, um, the rating call company affirmed that double A ones rating. Um, we were really excited to see that because the fiscal year twenty two audit was the first audit I could have done. That, um, which could have caused some downward rating. We were really happy to see that rating firm. The city received nine bids when they found issue forty two banks participated in the sale either directly or indirectly or hitting and selling it. The low bid was from Danny Montgomery Scott from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, with a true interest cost of three point oh six five two. The government and stuff it did was from hunting community security. Uh, with a true interest cost of three point oh nine seven nine, which is point oh three percent higher than the lowest. And then the highest bid, we received things from Robert Murphy there, which is three point three two seven two percent. But what we get on the lines is the highest bid. So we locked in that price today and you'll receive the fund for that in, in fiscal year twenty four. Um, in order to achieve the broad proceeds and the C I P, the bond issue was re-signed now to eight million eight hundred and fifteen due to the premium, the box, um, the premium. Um, that the city received on the box today. Uh, FM had built in a T S B of four point eight three percent during December and January for planning purposes. We had built in a hundred and fifty basis points or one point five percent due to the uncertainty of market. And as you might remember, the council decided not to include and had to push back some projects in order to decrease the original heart map. Don't, don't view that unstable environment, because we weren't really sure what was going to happen. Um, the result of the today's sale generated about nine hundred and seven thousand dollars less interest cost than it was originally planned. Um, and they want to talk a little bit about interest rates as well, um, since that time we haven't been on these bonds. So since January twenty twenty three, the market rates have, um, increased by four point. Or forty five, it was fifty five basis point one of course, and a decrease about fifteen to twenty, um, basis points years eight three twelve. So we're seeing an inverted yield curve, um, rather than a normal worker. Um, does anyone have any questions?
Also any questions?
Um, if there are no further questions, um, it is given as recommendation of the city of Johnson towards the ninety hundred and sixty thousand. Dollar obligation bonds, series twenty twenty three A to Danny Montgomery Scott of the, out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
Any other questions, council? Same none. Is there, uh? Resolution for us, does that cover the recommendation of this one? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty three dash one forty seven?
So we'll be second.
You have a motion in the second discussion. Stand up please.
Burkert.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Keep fast. Thank you. Item seventy, consider approval of resolution number. Twenty three dash one twenty nine, moving the site plan for fifty nine thirty northwest Beaver Drive, E C case twenty two dash three.
Northwest Beaver Development LLC has submitted a site plan for construction of an approximate twenty four thousand square foot. Uh, office, light industrial building on Northwest Beaver Drive, properties located just. Northwest at the intersection of the North West Fifty Nine Avenue, Northwest Beaver Drive. Property shown on our drive twenty forty comprehensive plan as an industrial feature in use in the properties currently zoned in one like duck field. So as proposed, the development is considered to put there comprehensively as well as currently zoning for the property. There is no existing trees on this site to take into consideration as they, they're, uh, bear exciting. Uh, they are in compliance with all open space requirement, but the non-open space area as well as landscaping. They are providing a, a public for their outdoor storage area along. That'd be along their southern properties or buffer, the northwest. Either drive frontage, I do have a condition in there to provide some solid fencing along the west, so that would give it screen in Northwest Fifty Nine Avenue as well. Access to the site, they have three access points to off Northwest Fifty Nine Avenue and one off Northwest Beaver Drive. The two northern accesses would be shared, temple had previously vacated the, uh, public. Access even there, condition not under anything, we probably need some, so that's what making their access is. So that does, uh, carry over to this, I think, as we wrap up those private means and before issue of building permit. Uh, property will, uh, install sidewalking Northwest Fifty Nine Avenue, there's currently sidewalking Northwest Beaver Drive, would be renamed. And they would have pedestrian connection back to both sidewalks on both street frontages there. Site is in compliance with all oxygen parking requirements for this site, as well as all loading requirements. It would have adequate access to all public utilities and your sewer, water, source sewer, as well as adequate fire protection. Brains for the site, uh, modification of an existing prime on detention basin along the eastern side and. I caught that I didn't mention properly, but along with more of the site as well, fortunately, the site doesn't exist based there. Those were previously signed to, uh, dress the quantity line for blood protection. They're going to be modified to make sure that they're addressed to water quality aspects as well. Architecture for the building, uh, we do require twenty five percent of the facade spacing Northwest Fifty Nine Avenue and Northwest Beaver Drive to be. A composed of brick, architectural concrete, channel, spectrum block, architectural steel or stone panel. I have requested that they provide some population to show that a meeting requirement. It certainly appears a meeting on the Northwest Beaver Drive frontage. The Northwest Fifty Nine Avenue frontage, uh, appears not to need it. Apparently good for what I mean. Uh, so they will have to add some additional materials there, have a, have any figures there. He is to look at that, uh. Loaded the block of these may higher building, that is, for the building. Other than that, I'm happy to go for the details, questions that you have any, this happened before the planning, the zoning commission, and they have.
Also any questions?
Uh, I'm, uh, I guess I'm a little disappointed in, uh, the presentation or the view of this building that you're going to see from Northwest Beaver. Uh, considering Northwest Beaver a pretty important artery of the city of Johnston. And from what I can tell here. A lot of the, um. Overhead doors, loading docks, et cetera, are on the south side of the building and will be visible from Beaver Drive. You mentioned a fence, but that is not along the east side of this property, is that correct?
It, it, it is, they, they currently show the solid fence along the south and east. But they do not show them along the west, and so you visually had it down along the west, well.
And the, but the west is what it against, uh?
Fifty nine.
Fifty nine.
So there is, uh, a six foot tall solid fence on the south property line, the leaning property line.
Okay.
And then I continue the fence and the sidewalk with the detention paper and all of the, the twenty one length feet up are so additional planting.
All right. I didn't, I wasn't reading that.
So all of them should aid to screen those who are loading day in the dots.
And the trees that they're proposing, these evergreen trees that are proposing along the south portion of the site. Is that correct, those are evergreen H and I?
Yes, coming color fur.
I'm color fur and, okay. No more, a little farther by, I like that. Thank you.
Other questions, council? Same none, we have a motion to approve this resolution, plan three dash one point nine. I'll move. All right. And a motion seconds, council? Stand up please.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkert.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Item seven C, consider approval of first reading orders number eleven zero one, commending sections forty seven point twenty, forty eight point zero three, fifty two point zero five. For the purpose of accommodating special events involving noise and alcohol consumption within the city of Johnston. We consider resolution of twenty three dash one to do document policy for special events being held on, on city of Johnston public property or right of right.
Evening again, um, so what we have is two action plans for you within the, the, the first is taking, um, what we talked about back at the. May fifteenth work session, it's going to start to construct the framework within our code. Uh, to make modifications that allow us to create a special events policy as well as permitting process. However, seeing use of law and, uh, new capabilities about catered, so. Um, well, the essence of the, the one that's one on one then is what makes, uh, one that's in line next to chapter forty seven, chapter forty eight, and chapter fifty two. Those are chapters of city parks, uh, reached the green belt and don't be spaces involve the noise regulations. And you didn't simply accept during a temporary, like, strictly authorized by the city under the proof schedule of policy before otherwise, certainly allowed elsewhere in its code. So creating, excuse the framework, to be able to implement the policy that's the next action on, uh, on the same agenda. So, um, if. Council open to the preference would be to go over second and third reading about the college tonight, but. Not something you comfortable with, then you need to come back at the next meeting and take that action. As far as the policy component that the code framework is allowing us to create. There's an essence of application, of course, part of it coming in to be able to touch our poster special events. Uh, in, in the agenda, even though there's four points of the policy, so it's certainly the application that's created, it's limited to the city clerk. Um, there's regulations associated with general wire room insurance policy, that's a certain number of individuals, you will harm those agreements. Uh, then there's, there's the component of alcohol licensing, ground shop insurance, those situations that involve alcohol. If there's a public screen closure, there would be action that may be taken by the council on that. A few statutes will be established. Uh, and then when we get to the final pieces of your, of your view on special event commitment. That's a, well, literally, I will give the final approval on that. And that's only based upon a comprehensive review that all these uses of the, the policies that are in that, as well as a risk evaluation for the, for the city. Uh, if there is denial from the committing process by me, then the appeal will go to the city administrators and have a secondary review of that. And then also have a general application based upon, uh, any of those problems we have in the world, that's, as well as a problem safety or. Failure that happens in the moment that gives the fire chief or the police to recognize the danger associated in that. Period application for, so. Uh, that's the broad view, um, our hope is that the policy is comprehensive and laser strong framework. As we thought at the work session, we're making on that compared to additional pieces or amendments to this in the future as we start to exercise the process. Our hope is that the application will capture all the information that we need. And that from them, we can work out a set to be able to take on it with the best today.
Also any questions?
Mary, you, uh, Chief, you had indicated already subjectively we could wait second and third reads. Uh, if I recall, when we had our, kind of, in mall, especially about this, that was in part to try to time things for our first farmers market event. Do, do we know, is there anything specific about that farmers market event that will require us to, or would suggest that we should do that? And carry out that activity, waiving those others and adopting polish. I, I'm going to do my best to answer this, and I don't know much to receive, uh, but in essence, my understanding is, on the concept of, of what promise not to. We, we have a resolution that most spend the enforcement provision, force of the state associated with the law that occurred. But the legal process is such that the only way you can truly make that amendment, we can give the ordinance. A resolution can't change it, right? Uh, so I think we've got fail safe for tomorrow, I mean. But the, the. Time pressures are, you know, looking at the future for some news, and that's what kind of, so.
Yeah, the resolution that goes on the initial part is the first one, um. You know, even if the other readings were waived to make the ordinance, it's not effective, it was published, it's not going to be. Boring anyway. Um, but yeah, I'm a little tiny thing.
Any other questions? No, do we have a motion to approve, perfect, the order is number eleven zero one. No, no.
That's right.
We have a motion in the second discussion. Stand up please.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkert.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion fast.
They are like to make a motion to, uh. Waive the second and third reading and go on to adopt and publish.
You know, motion, is there a second?
Third.
Do we have a motion in the second discussion? Stand up please.
Burkert.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Motion fast. Do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty three dash one two?
I'll move.
We have a motion in the second discussion. Stand up please.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkert.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Chief fast. Item seventy, consider approval of first reading orders number eleven O two, U P N A replacement chapter one twenty, containing liquor licensing. For the purpose of addressing recent changes to the Iowa code and to accommodate certain spending events within the city of Johnston.
So this is the other pieces that you've known that we still have, and that I'm going to facilitate the special events policy that you just act upon. Uh, there are also recent changes that should, that should, that should, that should, they're becoming classified, some of their alcohol permits. Uh, the, the essence of it is, is entering language into a new section of one one memorial file, it's a reason for the one merge. Uh, that provides the opportunity to have the, the starting events, criminal process for, uh, this, and associates out of all. Addition of the, the cleanup pieces of it, there's a sub section in the code that, um, the lights for all that. The rules of certain liquor licenses that states to follow legislation, uh, as well as simplify, put them in our today's, so also, once again, others to legislation. Have also been classified, some of the very original issue, last year commit, they're now, that's in practice, when they're definitely commit. Uh, so it's, it's clear, some of those aspects of the last case, uh, with one initial point on, but they're clarifying in such, uh. Uh, we have a provision where it appear a licensed alcohol establishment, looking at the license. Uh, it warning fifty percent is all the alcohol related, and then one, uh, under the legal age, because for that. Obviously, the best special events and applying the license, some of the things that we're seeing near the theory. Um, we want to make sure that we're accounting for that, so we've added language within that subdivision, well, so this section should not be construed as the main person to bring the events to, to follow the best. For the sale of all the therapies and the current machine, the activity license over there, issuing the orders while, or chapter one. for the sale of alcohol derisions and current issue, their activity license over there, issuing the orders filed or chapter one point three. So again, this probably should be, if you move the on the first year, need to have it as a full one pass. The life we have on the agenda.
Any questions, Chief? If not, we are motion to approve first reading of orders number eleven oh two.
I move, second.
We have a motion in the second discussion. Samuel, please.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion in the way this type of interview and go on to adopt and publish.
Second.
We have a motion in the second discussion. Samuel, please.
Evans. Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Motion fast. I am seventy, consider approval of reasons in the amount of. Fifteen million, one hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and seventy cents.
Move through.
Second. We have a motion in the second discussion. Samuel, please.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion fast, moving on to city administrator stuff.
Um, just one final, uh, remind you, we'll have the dark support business here on Thursday, seven thirty is the next course I have, make seven o'clock.
Did you say that was here?
Here at Steve Ball. Okay, um, please one more next. We've had amazing interest in our slow body restoration grant, uh, we have had hundred and fifty one pre-application submitted, uh, we were hoping that we had kind of closed that on May third. We'll still accept people that fit into the program, but and closing that May third and fourth will be transition into letting the bid, which was on makes consent to be defended, but out there. So a hundred and fifty one, twenty pound, two pound each away, so a little over two hundred, well. Uh, forty eight acres, we were hoping to be twenty, so well over double. And we were awarded a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars from our department of acting and stewardship. This, a little over two hundred thousand, a little above our one twenty five amount. We are estimating high at this stage on both land area and cost. Uh, we have discounted areas such as garden beds, uh, decks that are actually imperious below, also. Uh, we are fine when these are heard, but we did want to have a discussion tonight on if there's interest in accountable and contributing some additional funds out of our store on utility. Specifically, the missing music engineering and minor projects fund, uh, staff are coming in twenty thousand dollars, uh, being allocated for this project. Whole county that indicated that they're willing to chip in twenty thousand dollars as well. And then Metro Waste, uh, has, uh, put in there, maybe at least a full company, but they've been chipping aside and ten thousand as well. Then I think it's up to a hundred and seventy five thousand. And we're fairly confident we did, uh, everyone, or at least most of the properties, we did with them there. Uh, we'll we'll likely see some of those properties drop off when they get their file quote, so. Really, just taking direction from the captain tonight, are we feeling comfortable and checking in twenty thousand dollars for our store might be close by?
Council?
I have one question, uh, the two townhouse HOA, is that two individual towns or are you talking about a whole group of towns?
The whole group of townhomes, um, Northland, town, and then, um, Homestead, takes a ground.
So Northland has something like twenty or thirty.
Thirty six.
Thirty six.
Oh, yeah, I'm on this.
Yeah, so maybe there's thirty six there.
So a hundred and sixty one, does that include the thirty six?
That sounds that they should live long. There may be one, I have a hundred and sixty one out of it. So Homestead seventeen, thirty thirty six, so one sixty one minus two, one thirty nine, plus that, plus seventy seven.
No, I I don't.
They want to be down.
I can you would be that, uh, this is a super program and these improve the public community overall. And so if we have the funding in the storm water budget, uh, up to a certain level, I I would say, I would, uh, be a bigger.
I would agree, yeah, I would.
Think you're seeing, uh.
Well, once we kind of get to the final final numbers, we'll like to do that in a month and, uh, to get my, uh, while it's.
So great, my question, yeah, this is, you know, the interest is greater than what we had hoped in all the work that I'm trying to.
Will have, will or name that if a contractor wants to get them on board, uh, the hope is that, but there is a possibility that it's more than anyone anticipated.
Sure, so it's not, and I think you were suggesting that it began in the August.
Yeah, I start August twenty eighth, complete by November, then it's ready for Thanksgiving. If it ain't even moving down, we know, um, certainly look at our spring application.
Yeah, it would be just as effective.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, I did read that to the state as well to see if they had additional funds and they both.
But every gentleman's person.
They said, they did advise that they're likely not to fund full body restoration above a hundred and twenty five thousand in the future as well, so we got a comment out of them there. Right, well. Anyone think of that, thank Clayton and and he's taken a hundred and sixty plus calls, email over the last six weeks and, uh, he's been a fantastic guy with that. Uh, add a little less to work load to his plate, but, uh, it's quite a lot, so.
Good job, you, you know, a neighborhood get together Saturday night. And I was still talking to neighbors about, so you might get some additional.
I I love them.
Okay, good job. Staff update on the city side order here first. Talking about phone calls.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a brief update, we did send out over three hundred and forty letters, um, last Friday, the second. Uh, those residents did receive, um, a letter that indicated the number of the patients you will have as well as the repair form with, uh, we're. So this is the repair form that has their property information. And then it gives you three options, they can hire their contractors, perform the work themselves, or they can, uh, request to join the city side well program and never about there to do it. The, we want to go, we have the bottom, work with Janet, it's, uh, the QR code at the bottom will take you straight to a fill of a form that's online that will then submit it straight to the city, uh, which is is great, uh, that's a great idea that Janet had, so. Uh, we put also additional information on there as well as, um, the repair form, but they did, like I said, they received the letter, the repair form, and then they also received I have a repair from this on what we were looking for, which has the schematic and the description of what we were looking for, along with pictures, they can go out to look at their sidewalk and identify those repair codes as well. So along with that, in the actual letter that they received, they do have, uh, the QR code that takes them to the city website, and on our city website, there is additional information. Uh, the frequently asked questions, there are twenty two frequently asked questions on our information sheet. I do want to draw our attention to the number eight, not how much, we'll recycle with the city cover to the sidewalk. Currently, in that, we can see that we're inciting the cost of maybe four hundred and sixty hundred dollars a pedal. Um, I've heard some contractors quote some recent prices that are in that range or just below that range. So, um, hopefully, we get plenty that join the program and they're probably a good rate, uh, let us talk about how while we do give a range, let's talk about why there are many factors that determine that cost, we've got material cost, contractor availability as well as what it performs, so, but all of those are contributing factor in that price. Uh, along with that, we we did put out a couple of opt-in guides. Um, first one we've got here, you know, how to fill gaps of one inch or less. So we did create this, this opt-in guide, depending on step by step interactions on how to do that as well as one for writing it or half inch or less, so. That also goes on the city website, we didn't know those opt-in, because not everybody has those efficiencies, mark over the cycle, if it is online for the to do too, so. Uh, that's a quick update, it's it's interesting, we currently have a little more than a dozen folks that's on based on the total that we're running so far of the everybody that's doing the city side walk program except for two that are gonna do the work businesses. It's just a brief update, um, really, we only had about a half a dozen phone calls today, uh, in regards to the city side walk program. And I think our inspector went out and went with, uh, three or four of those of the people who've shared uh, kind of on top of the residents and maybe another three or four email by the first one, didn't they, so. Um, all in all, not not bad for getting that email or the letters out last Friday, so. Uh, you guys receiving any calls, feel free to report in the network.
Mayor, you may go on and say this, what is the deadline that we're actually on?
So on repair form, it's the top, June thirteenth. So we give them a a month to respond to us, um, left every single letter, we're going to, for the government of both parties. Have a reminder sent out here about two or three weeks forward in a month to remind them to to go online, go back and update if you're planning on joining the the program.
But some point after June period, you'll be reporting back for us on what the, what the reaction results are.
Yeah, and and we'll also at that time, I mean, we will start, uh, they got tells that cover first that they're, uh, repairs, but we plan to start in advance, planning for putting together plans and quantities on what we're going to base on what we receive of the data.
Any other questions from that? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
It's, um, I've been talking about it a long time, it's finally happened.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Anything else for us, city administrators, uh, what? Council events. So be there. That's all right. Bye, dear.
Thank you, appreciate it very much. I just want to thank all of us, when they were doing the proclamation, that was the only proclamation, that's why we were, we had to have that, we should have, thank you.
Council member?
I gotta, rather on this, I'll try to move quickly through it, uh, first and foremost, since our last meeting, since it was, uh, uh, three weeks ago or so, um, we've had lots of peaceful graduations, so I'm proud and want to congratulate on record all of the high schoolers who reside in either city. Um, and certainly, uh, our Johnston undergrads on their graduation. I also commend the the parents, uh, for helping them get through, uh, and reach that milestone. I also, uh, just want to remind everybody, school is out for the summer, I won't sing it for you, but instead, uh, please be mindful of kids now traversing our sidewalks and paths and midway down our streets at all hours or at least different hours than you might have anticipated them before while they were in school. Uh, and with that being said, obviously, uh, continue to look out for your neighbors as well, uh, sometimes I have lines and I will hence get to do other things, so, uh, just to encourage them to be a model for for good citizenship. I also want to congratulate our teachers, uh, for making it through this year and their staff, uh, within our school dispatch. And, uh, I certainly also want to extend great thanks for the school resource officers, um, for participating in a very active school year. Uh, and I'm appreciative of Chief Dan for, uh, even placing an additional resource officer to be returned um, to make sure that the summit was not only in a better, safer place, but also, I think, to some extent, um, helped to bridge some community outreach. Um, and with that being said, uh, our Johnston kids do great things even when they're not in school. Uh, as is attested by state track championships that have occurred since, uh, we've last met and we'll get a chance to celebrate with an person that sounds like incoming weeks, but also our fabulous soccer teams as well. And I just happened to be on the soccer field, uh, on Saturday night and looked behind me and, uh, even though you can take the Johnston folks out of Johnston, the Johnston police are right there making sure that we're continuing to be safe, so Shane Moore was there and I was, uh, very grateful that his presence and his representation uh, was to make sure that we were continuing to be safe, as, uh, were, uh, many of the wonderful police officers and fire folks too, so that was just awesome, uh, in that, uh, consideration. Uh, a couple of other things, uh, I do serve as the liaison and representative on the library board. Uh, they have begun the process of discussing how they're going to build the director position. And, uh, so you will hear more updates on that, uh, including likely, um, hearing about how a consultant will be hired to really get a comprehensive assessment. And I think that that's important, um, for, uh, the library, especially as they set forth on what they want to see and how they can move forward for the future and better prepare them. The other thing I tease out with regard to libraries, they are full of activities this summer, so if you or folks you know, uh, have, uh, some sort of mere instance of boredom yet clearly haven't been to the library lately, uh, between your reading books and your kid, uh, incentives, uh, for teens and tweens and even younger folks, um, there's a lot of stuff going on. And, uh, there even seems to be a wine and books, uh, and you can still sign up for about a half a year or seventeen to even a sip and read or the lesson or whatever you want to do from that standpoint. Um, I alluded already, uh, about my appreciation for our police, uh, but I do want to extend a personal thank you to Chief Danal as well as Lieutenant Norrie and especially to Officer Miles Gray. Uh, you all know I ask a lot of questions and I talk a lot, but none of you, I don't think, you're kind of ride in a car with me uh, for four to, well, actually about five and a half hours straight, like I was expected. I learned so much, you know, this is right along, uh, I got to see parts of the city, uh, and, uh, certainly some different, uh, means of city services, it was fantastic. And it also epitomizes to me, uh, community is first, looking at the police department, uh, you say it and you live it and all of your officers seem to live it too, and so I'm just grateful for all the ones that you provided for safety and security within our community, thank you very much for that. I echo the sentiments of, uh, council member, uh, Ready, uh, with regard to our compliance proclamation, Mayor, thank you for taking that up, uh, and reading a very long confirmation, but a very important one, and then also coordinating, uh, the city's recognition. Last thing I want to bring up, uh, is, uh, is also Pride Month. And, uh, I think it is absolutely important that we recognize, um, the LGBT A plus community that resides in Johnston that, uh, lives, grows, learns in Johnston and certainly recommends us, uh, in our businesses as well. But I also want to make sure that we understand that it isn't just one month that these folks live here and that need to be recognized, heard, and certainly supported. So throughout all of our months of the year, please make sure that you're continuing to be a good citizen, uh, to everyone, in all of them. And quite frankly, Mayor, your proclamation, uh, regarding, uh, the gun safety sums it up even just the same, uh, for those celebrating Pride Month to honor and value all human rights. And quite frankly, that's what Johnston's about, considering that, so with all of that, thank you for doing.
It's always a pleasure. All I want to say is I look forward to the first, first tomorrow and I hope it goes on well and I know that Navy has been working hard and so if, um, if we can all, if anybody goes there, just know that it's their first time running this and. Just know that it's their first time running this, and it'll only get better, now the state's not gonna be good.
Councilman Cole? He left.
Oh, he left.
Not the station, okay. Uh the only thing that I would add to all of the other discussion this evening is that last week I participated in a um discussion over breaking diversity on elevating stability in local elections. It was sponsored by the Great Moon Partnership, the Jack Haxters Association of Central Iowa and Iowa Living Cities, and I was part of a panel of. Um other city officials. That discussed some of the issues that were raised, and then there was some other presentation made by um Scott Racker, who was fifty five of the very, and very central. Well, I thought we had good discussion, um you know. It's something that we all need to work at, stability in our lives, in our interactions with each other, uh at. Council meetings, within the city government, but also in our local elections, and so it was an important, obviously. Um I will, I received today power, as a PowerPoint presentation that Scott Racker had created. Uh as part of the discussion, and I'll be sending now to all of you, so. So I want to give you heads up on on that, we're speaking out of the email, so. Any else coming for the uh for the council this evening? If not, we are adjourned.
Yeah.
So bad, eight thirty.